Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. It is April Fools' Day. And I hope we don't have anything foamy tonight. I am a little caught off tonight that we have our group from High Brighton, I think, here tonight.
Welcome.
We meant to talk about that probably before, but we're gonna, we'll do this as we go, but thank you for being here and I'll bring you guys up in just a little bit to talk about that. So, thank you for being with us. As we usually do, we'll start with a moment of silence and we'll remain standing for our pledge allegiance. Before we go to our moment of silence, I would like for you to keep some families and friends in your thoughts and prayers. Of course, keep continuing praying for Councilmember Todd Perdue and his family and wife Catherine as they continue to go through some things right now medically. And we want to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. They are actually traveling a little bit to be away right now, so we're missing Councilmember Perdue tonight. Also, a couple other council members are not with us. David Stevens is not here tonight, Mayor Procton Stevens, and Councilmember Chrissy, Kimmy Rogers.
I'm here.
You're here.
I think I am.
Kimmy Rogers is not with us tonight, so they all have other things going on that couldn't be here. But we want to keep Todd and his family, and then Mayor Jerry Hod's, the mayor of the City of Newton, his family, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. His wife is having some difficulties and we want to keep and pray for her and his family over the next few months as things, they work on things there also health-wise. And also keep former Fire Chief Ken Hare in your thoughts and prayers. His mother passed away. They want to keep them in our thoughts as well as for their families. So, please remember these families in your thoughts and prayers as we rise.
Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we get started tonight, I do have a couple things I'd like to recognize. Today was the Caldwell County Economic Development Industry Appreciation Luncheon Day, and several were honored with that, with several awards and that kind of thing. The Partner of the Year here in Caldwell County, of course, was Duke Energy and Blue Ridge Energy were honored by the EDC today, and we certainly appreciate all that Duke Energy and Blue Ridge Energy do for us every day and all they went through during Helene and so many things. We were blessed to have them. They stayed till everybody's power was on. That's the way they looked at it and continue to work. But they were honored today. The Industry of the Year was Harmony Timber Works here in Caldwell County, and they were, they are represented as well. The Herman Anderson Award was Mr. Bob McCrery from McCrery Modern Furniture was honored with the Herman Anderson Award. And of course, you know that Bob has done, and the McCrery family and McCrery Modern have done so many things for this community over the years, and we certainly appreciate what all he has done. And the Legacy Award was to Mrs. Ann Smith. Ann has been a, just a hard worker in the county for so many years in so many different ways, and we appreciate Ann. She's a council member of Town of Hudson, but she's also involved with the Community College and so many other things. So, they were honored today. It was a very nice event at lunch today, so we want to keep them in our thoughts and pray and remember them as we move forward. Also, the last couple of months, I've been meaning to do this, Our State Magazine has featured Caldwell County and Lenore and others in it, and want to mention that. Certainly, the Patterson Western North Carolina Sculpture Center was involved. This is in last month's March issue of Our State Magazine, a great article about our Sculpture Center out there was in it. Also in that one was a group of writers who are here in Lenore and Caldwell County, great pictures of them here, who have written books all over, and they were honored in this month. And then also Fairfield Chair Company was honored, with Ann Lindsay Bell being featured, and the Bell family, John Bell and others. Fairfield, of course, a long-time industry here in Caldwell County. But they were, we were, we were kind of the whole magazine in March with the Secrets of the Foothills, as it was called, and even the front cover was part of Caldwell County out at Leatherwood. So, that was good. And then this past month here in April, it just came out, the hot dog guy was around, and he came to the Shaken Dog in Lenore, and he honored that. It's one of the best hot dog places in the state of North Carolina. The Hot Dog King, he's called, it was in there, but Shaken Dog was featured, so we were honored, and I know they were honored to be a part of the Our State Magazine in April. So, if you get a chance, pick those up and read them and enjoy that as we move forward. Right now, we have a special recognition on behalf of the council, and I'll ask Chief Phillips if he will come. There he is, he's on his way up right now.
Chief, always an honor to be with you. This is proclamation, as we, in recognition of our Republican Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is from April 13th through the 19th of 2025. We know that they play such a wonderful vital role that we have to have, so I will present this to you, and then I'll let you talk about it as we move forward. Whereas the City of Lenore Police Department Telecommunicators play a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community, and whereas telecommunicators have been successfully serving the public safety communication needs of the City of Lenore throughout the year, and whereas while enduring long hours, abnormal schedules, and handling frequent life and death emergencies, telecommunicators set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner, and whereas telecommunicators provide a critical communication link between the residents and emergency responders, and whereas these individuals efficiently coordinate emergency services to ensure the health and safety of our residents, visitors, and travelers in our community 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas our public safety communications personnel serve the public daily in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services. Therefore, be it resolved that I, as mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim and declare the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Lenore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and first responders safe. Witness my hand and seal this the first day of April, 2025. Chief?
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. And I'll let you tell us about it.
Some years I have had some of our telecommunicators come in. This year, I didn't do that. We are running staffing really tight, and so some of them have had to work on some days off, and so I didn't want to ask again, hey, I need you to stay over or come in on your day off to come and be recognized. But the job they do is very important. It is, they bridge the gap between our citizens and our patrol officers. When, when an event happens and somebody calls our department or dials 911, they are that first step in the criminal justice system in getting needed supplies and people the help they need. And so, most of the time, they're out of sight, they're not seen, and are not thought of by the public, but they do play a vital role for our officers and our city. And so, we'll do some things in-house for them, as we do every year, to recognize them and thank them, but it's a very tough job, and we're very appreciative. We've got some dedicated staff, and they work long hours, same hours as our officers, 12-hour shifts, and nights, weekends, somebody's there all the time. And so, thanks, I want to thank the council mayor for recognizing them, and I appreciate the recognition.
Thank you.
Chief, want a little picture?
We don't have a hold of council.
We don't have a hold of council.
Yeah, we just stand.
You want to stand up?
Yeah, we'd stand right there.
Stand up and move right there. We'll move back as well.
That way, there's something you can watch here.
Yeah.
Fill the screen up.
Yeah.
He's too lazy.
He don't even want to.
Balanced.
Council, can you, yeah, go to your left, right?
I'm not council.
You get run over there.
Council, I'm in, so.
I'm standing at you.
I'm gonna try this. I can see everybody. Ready? One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Yeah. So now, the April Fool's is on me, I think. We, we talked, Sasha, about this, and somehow, we didn't get this all together, but we are so glad you're here tonight. This group is from Germany and are visiting here with High Brighton High School. Make sure I get all this right now. And we are always honored to have you, you know that. I always have some things to give you, we do, and I don't have that tonight, but we're gonna get that straightened out after tonight, if that's okay. Not money. But we do have some gifts that we always like to give our students that come to visit with us and to you. So, thank you for being here. Will you come up and tell us about the group and where everybody's from, if that'd be okay? We know they're from Germany, and well, I think they're from the Black Forest area, is the way we talk, but I want you to introduce everybody and...
So, I'll give my side, and then Herr Fütter will give his side with his class.
And then we'll come down and get a picture with everybody, if that's okay.
Sounds good. Well, I want to say thank you to inviting us over again, because this really gives us recognition as far as High Brighton and Stegen and their program, their exchange. I think it's really important. I think the older I get, the more important I feel like face-to-face and in-person interactions are, and there's nothing like seeing the Germans here and seeing the Americans interact with the Germans. I was just talking to one of the other teachers and one of our hosts, the Martins, and how normally, we're on the doldrums in April with school, but we're all lifted up just from their presence being here. So, really appreciate them coming and taking on that challenge and working with Herr Fütter for, I mean, it's now gone on 12 years is what High Brighton has had with this exchange.
Yeah.
So, and I'm also really, really thankful to the families, because without you families, this would not happen, and I couldn't do it without y'all. And of course, my school, High Brighton, has always been very supportive of these international top exchanges. So, just really glad to be here and thank you again.
Yeah, well, I also thank you. It's not the first, my first time I'm standing here, and I hope we can continue for many more years.
Yes.
And if you don't mind, I've prepared a speech. It's not long. Dear Mayor Gibbons, Honorable Members of the City Council, it's a great honor for me to speak to you today as teacher from your partner's school in Germany. First and foremost, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to the warm welcome and generous hospitality you show our students. The care and kindness they receive from their host families make them feel truly at home here in Lenore. For that, we are sincerely thankful. Since 2013, we have had the privilege of maintaining a school partnership with High Brighton High School. Over the past years, this exchange has grown into a tradition that we are very proud of. Each visit, each encounter strengthens the bond between our schools and our communities. Our students return home with unforgettable memories, whether it's attending classes here, experiences American culture, or simply forming friendships that cross an ocean. These are experiences that shape young people in meaningful ways. In today's world, international exchange among youth is more important than ever. It builds understanding, breaks down prejudices, and lays the foundation for a more connected and compassionate world. On behalf of my school, BBC Stegen, thank you once again for your support and for helping us keep this wonderful partnership alive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and we will have some gifts. How long will you be here?
Till the 11th of April.
Okay, good. So, there's another, maybe there's another opportunity that we can, I could get some, we can get some things for everybody? Okay. Yeah, we'll do a picture. And we'd like really to, we'd like to meet the kids, the students, I better say, the students on that. Would you, could they come and maybe introduce themselves to us?
Hello, I'm Till, and I want to thank you. Yeah. It's nice to stay here.
Thank you very much.
Good to have you.
My name is Tizian, and I feel really welcomed here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Sarah, and I also thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Katerina, and I really appreciate it here.
Thank you.
I had to be here.
Thank you.
My name is Tore, and I'm really happy and thankful to have the opportunity to experience the American life.
You're a Red Sox fan?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Nicholas, and I'm also very happy to be here.
Thank you.
I'm Linus, and I really appreciate the opportunity to stay here, too.
Thank you.
My name is Helena, and I'm very thankful to be here. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. We're glad to have you.
All right, we got some High Brighton students here and attendance as well.
Oh, good. Well, come up and tell us who you are.
Hello, my name is Aubrey. I go to High Brighton. I'm a sophomore there, and I'm hosting Helena, and this is only the second day, but it's already been great, and it's a great opportunity, and we thank y'all for letting us do this.
Thank you for doing it.
My name is Cadence. I'm a senior at High Brighton, and I'm hosting Till, and it's been really fun, so thank you.
Good.
My name is Isabella, and I'm a sophomore, and I'm hosting Sarah. And yeah, it's very fun.
Good. Well, wonderful. It's glad to have you. Jimmy, glad to have you as always. Thank you for being, being with us, and I know you're always part of the exchanges that we have.
Right, yeah, this time I'm just a host family, so I'm not part of the organization.
Okay.
I appreciate Sasha and the instructors from Germany for organizing that.
Good, good. Well, come up and listen, y'all come in here, and Joshua's gonna get together. We'll stay back here so that we can all work together. High Brighton, High Brighton would like to have him stay to play basketball.
Some plants back there. Not for them.
No, we're good.
I think that looks good. You can see everyone. Anybody else? Pictures? All right, my turn. All right, you ready? One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna point this right at you. One, two, three, cheese.
Now we can't see it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Pass it on down here.
Pass some chocolate on down.
Yeah, there you go. Everybody, everybody sample some chocolate.
Oh, wait, you can hold on. Let me get a picture of the president.
Yeah.
Me and the mayor.
You can hold it, go ahead, go ahead. Thank you again for coming, and we appreciate it. And I'd like to get with you guys before we leave, so we can get together and went to, I'd like to, we'll get some gifts together for them to remember Lenore and that kind of thing. Now, how many times have you been here?
Six times.
Six times?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought so. I remember you when you walk in. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see you. Thank you for bringing this wonderful group to Lenore, and we hope that'll be a great experience for them while they're here. What else do you have planned? Where else are you going?
We're going to Old Salem, because Old Salem has some historical German backgrounds that we want to investigate this time.
Okay.
We try to do something different every time. Like, two years ago, we went to a NASCAR museum. We have a bunch of NASCAR museums in that group, and then before that, we went to the Billboard House.
Okay.
So, yeah, Old Salem is on the docket this time. And then we're gonna go back to the School for the Dead of Mortlington, because that was actually a really cool experience, seeing sign language as well, because they're, they're from the school, too, that's does signing at their school, so they kind of get some comparative education going around there. And a lot of us, like I told the students, trying to recruit them, we drive by that building all the time, but do we really know what's going on inside? And seeing what the teachers do there and what resources they have there, so it's just, it's a cool little collaboration.
Good.
And they're gonna go to the South High Brighton baseball game, a lot of them tonight, so.
Oh, great.
If we jet out of here just a little bit, then that's where we're going to. That's a big part of what they want to experience, too.
Well, good. Well, if you do any before, just get back, call me, and let's set up another thing we get to give for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being with us. Okay, we'll move on then. We do not have any matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, consisting of this, item A are minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 4th, as submitted. The minutes were listed on the March 18th agenda but were inadvertently omitted from the agenda packet. Item B is minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, as submitted. Item C are minutes of the City Council Budget Meeting of Tuesday, March 25th. Item D is the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and approval of that, of course. Item E is the bid award. This is for the Zaxford Greenway Loop Connector. Following the review of the bid submitted, the recommendation is awarding the bid to CH Barlow LLC for the grading and installation of the Zaxford Greenway Loop Connector for the total sum of $118,972. CH Barlow LLC is appropriately licensed in the state of North Carolina and is adequately, easily, easy to say, equipped to perform work of this nature. Item F is a funding resolution. This is for Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. We recommend approval of the funding resolution and required documents for a state loan and/or grant for the process basin improvements project at the Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant as submitted. And item G is a change order number one. This is for the Rhodhis Flash Mix Basin Repair Project, recommending that we approve change order number one for the Rhodhis Flash Mix Basin Repair Project. The total value of the changes reflects an increase of $13,522.68, and also extends the contract time to May 30th, 2025. There are still unused unit prices for materials, allowances, and contingency funds remaining of over $85,000 in the project budget. Additional background information is available on the council action form included in the agenda packet. That's your consent agenda items A through G. I will open it up to the council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G as presented.
Have a motion, a motion from Councilmember Thomas that we approve the consent agenda items A through G as presented. No other conversation. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed. And that is?
Four.
One, two, four. That's four, four, yeah, unless we're short tonight. Yes, sir?
I would just like to thank Jonathan Hogan and Jared Wright and Phil Harper for that. That's part of the splash pad project, and it'd make a loop. I think John Hogan told me it's about a half a mile. Is that correct for the loop?
Yes, sir, a half mile.
So, he ran that this weekend. It's not paved yet. So, that's another half mile to the greenway, and we'll go back and support the soccer fields, but also the splash pad. So, thank them for all that work.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on then. Next on our agenda is requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone here tonight who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Other than the students we just met and others, anyone else? Jennifer, always glad to see you here. Thank you for being a part. Anyone else that would like to address it? Nice to see you as well back there. So, thank y'all for being here tonight, and anyone who'd like to address us, this is the time to do so. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on then. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you, guys. See you around town. Have fun.
Mayor, council tonight, a few items for information for you. Tomorrow at 2:30, Mulberry Recreation Center, we'll have a ribbon cutting for the new gym floor and also the 12 pickleball court, so please be there at 2:30 tomorrow for that, and we'll go back and Phil will go back and I think Brenda's coordinated some of that. We'll introduce you to the court and to pickleball. I don't know if there's gonna be a pickleball match or not. I don't know if Brenda's gonna take on Phil or not, but...
Oh, yeah, we got it.
This Saturday, April 5th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., is a cruise in in downtown. The North Carolina DOT Spring Litter Sweep begins on Saturday, April 12th, and will end on Saturday, April 26th. There's more information on the DOT website at littersweep.com. Easter egg hunt will be held at Mulberry Rack on Saturday, April 12th at 10:00 a.m. until noon. The City-County Service Committee will meet on Monday, April 14th at noon at the J. Hebron Hill Civic Center. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, April 10th at 2:00. The Western Piedmont Council Gummas has their annual meeting on Thursday, April 10th at the Hickory Convention Center. That'll be held at 6:00 p.m. City offices will be closed on Friday, April 18th, and observe it's a good Friday. We have an Earth Day and Arbor celebration at the Unity Park and Community Gardens, and that's open for all ages. That's gonna be on Saturday, April 19th, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. We'll also go back and have a ribbon cutting for our new pavilion that's been constructed out there, so encourage everybody to attend that meeting or that, that opening on the, on the 19th at 10:00 a.m. That is, again, Earth Day. The Bootlegger 100 Bicycle Race will be held on Saturday, April 19th, from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. The race begins and ends downtown Lenore, and then the Annual Bicycle Festival that the city puts on will be on Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 until 3:00 o'clock in downtown. Lastly, one item for information, and I'll let Mr. Harper speak about that, is our 4th of July fireworks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Come up to the counter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just want to bring something to your attention. It's gonna be a little bit out of the norm, and it's not an April Fool's joke, okay? I was contacted last week by the company that's been doing our fireworks for the last several years, and they notified me due to shortage of technicians that they're not gonna be able to do that this year, but they suggested we do the third or the fifth, which I felt like the fifth was probably best for the community, but that'd be your decision. In doing that, they gave us a different price, but in doing that, I said, let me just reach back out and see if there's other companies, and there were other companies, but nobody's available for July 4th. But the company that did, the companies that did reach back out gave us a good savings, but the fireworks really need to be the third or the fifth this year. Everybody's booked up. Most, most of these companies book up four to five years in advance, and we got short notice last week that with them being short on technicians that they're not gonna be able to honor the 4th. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
April Fool, come on.
No, April Fool, I'm sorry.
And April 5th is a Saturday, so that's why I think we, as staff, recommend probably Saturday. More folks, you have the folks that will be off work.
Yeah, and I've got, both companies said they needed to know by noon tomorrow, because... Yeah, and I've got, both companies said they needed to know by noon tomorrow, because other people are asking. They're holding spots for us right now.
All right, council, they need to...
So if you do it the third, that's the day before, but people may not be off work. So I guess the question is participation.
Well, the whole thing is you'll be off work at night.
I know. But fifth is a Saturday. It's probably, probably the better choice.
Yeah, I think so.
Just consensus. I mean, staff, I think recommendation would be Saturday.
I would assume Saturday would be the best.
The church is more available probably then as well, with their members and stuff.
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at Saturday, July the 5th.
Yes, sir.
He can do that. We'll go back and announce it. I just want to make sure the public understands it's out of our control on the 4th, and he's got us on it.
Consent is the fifth, right?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Phil, for that report. Way things go sometimes, I guess.
Tonight, you have one item for, I guess, for council action. As you're aware, the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference is gonna be held in Greenville, North Carolina later this month. And the business meeting's on May 1st, and we need to go back and have council appoint a delegate to serve as our voting member for that event. So I'll leave that to council to decide who you want to go back and be the voting member, and once you do that, we'll go back and submit it to the league.
Okay.
And who was attending?
Me.
Me and you?
Just us and Mayor.
I think everybody...
Thank you, everybody, but Mr. Purdue's not...
You going?
You going?
Okay.
Ralph going? Ralph's not going.
April 29.
That's for 4/29 through May 1, I think, is...
So we can vote for delicate today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to, I would like to make a recommendation that Mr. Jonathan Beal be our delegate for the City Vision Conference.
Okay. You all right with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Yeah, all right. We have a motion from council member Thomas that we appoint council member Beal as the appointed delegate to serve as our voting delegate at the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Business Meeting, which will be on May 1st, 2025, in Greenville, North Carolina for the conference. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. You're the man.
He's the man. So that's the 29th through the 1st, right?
That's right. April 29th through...
Do you want me to start putting on things?
Ike, you up next? Next delegate.
Next year.
All right. Anything else? All right. All for the mayor to report. All right. Any report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't have any. I think we covered all the things out of the mayor's office for tonight on that. And anything from any of our council members that we need to talk about or hear anything from? Okay. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.